I'd like to call this special town council meeting to order. Can everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. And just to remind everyone at home that the town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. So go to the town of Bridgewater Facebook page to find the link for the YouTube connection. All right. To start off, I do have a few condolences I'd like to share with everyone. We have lost unfortunately the following veterans. Gary Tardif, served in the U.S. Air Force from June 1963. He passed away July 17, 2024. Faye McCabe, served in the U.S. Army and served in Vietnam, passed away July 23, 2024. Kendall Burke, U.S. Navy veteran, served in Vietnam, passed away August 1, 2024. And Michael Minsk, U.S. Army veteran, served in Vietnam, passed away as well on August 1, 2024. Can we have a moment of silence for all those veterans and any other deceased members of the military from the town of Bridgewater? Thank you. All right. So let's start off with no announcements for the president. I'm going to make comments as we go along when we go along through the new business here. So we'll go ahead and open it up to Citizens Open Forum. Again, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate responses to questions, concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Again, please state your name and address for the record and keep it to three minutes. Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Fitzgibbons, 238 South Drive. I just want to hit a couple points here, as I've said in the past, and I maintain, I believe the town manager process, selection process, both interim and full-time should be a completely town council-driven process. You are the folks we elected. I voted for seven of you. I endorsed one of you on Facebook as a district counselor, and if Mr. Clark, Mr. Chase had an opponent, I always confuse you with the president of the college. You're both good-looking guys. I'd have definitely supported you because we have all served together, and I know that you all have the best interests of the town at heart, and I trust you. That's why I voted for you. And you guys won election. People trust you. They voted for you. And so I don't want you to give away the power of that because in addition to that, you know, you have a responsibility. You have a right and a responsibility to do that, in my opinion. So but however you decide, and I've said this many, many times in many different ways to many different people, however you decide, as I said, I believe you all have the best interests of the town at heart. Whether you agree or not on particular measures, that's fine, but I'll support whatever the majority of the council votes for. You know, I don't want to see you abdicate or abandon your process to something beyond the council. And I'd just like to remind you that if you do, perhaps if you don't want to make a decision, which I do not encourage, you look to Section 8.5 of the Charter and say, we'll put a menu of choices up for everyone to vote on at the November meeting around how a committee should be established. We're going to have thousands of voters in November to make that choice. I do not recommend it. I do not recommend it because do not abdicate, do not abandon your responsibility. Remember, winning, as I told you, you all won, winning is easy, governing is harder. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Mr. Wood.
Bill Wood, 388 Hayward Street. I'm speaking as a past district counselor, District 6, and I want to say a few words about the Stausenhardt parking park. It looks like the parking lot is open. I'm hoping the council will do something to recognize the park and all the effort that was put into it. When the for sale sign went up on that five acres adjacent to Route 18, I called a real estate person and started a conversation with him, the town manager, Michael Dutton, and eventually Lincoln Andrews. Lincoln Andrews represents the family of Stausenhardt, which provided the first 72 acres. I became familiar with the 72 acres because at the early part of our career here on the town council, we were trying to buy the property over that is now Magnolia Way, and we were unsuccessful. But I walked the Stausenhardt Park because I knew it was about 72 acres. I wanted to get a feel for what the park was, but you couldn't really get in there without trespassing. And thanks to the effort of Lincoln and the whole Stausenhardt family, they are the ones that really made it possible for Bridgewater to move forward and adopt additional open space next to Route 18, which has now become parking. So it's easier for people to get there, easier for people to walk the trails. And I just heard from a friend of mine, he says that it's outstanding. It's 11 out of 10 for a rating. So hopefully the council will do something, recognize the Stausenhardt family again, and maybe have a dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Thank you.
Might as well take these. Another pair of signatures. That's from a bunch of concerned citizens. I was here last week talking about the committee and the size of the committee, and once again, we got the petition. We got even more signatures than last time in shorter time, and it's from the concerned citizens of this town. And in this particular situation, it's about this citizen involvement in the selection process of an interim and permanent town manager. Now, we want to, we do want to, I don't quite agree with Mr. Fitzgibbons. I know there's a lot of qualified people on the town council. There's a bunch of good people here, but we'd like to get a little more expertise, a little more, a few more eyes and ears in this particular situation in the hiring of a new town manager. So you, once again, get people from all different backgrounds in this town who are retired and don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, and to get them involved, retired police chiefs, project managers, engineers, just to throw some questions out that you might not normally ask, and it's nice to have that expertise. So we want an 11-person committee instead of the five that was originally put forward. Now, we all know what's at stake here with this town manager, okay? He's going to preside over the commuter rail project. He's going to preside over the revitalization of the downtown. This is the biggest thing to ever hit this town. This is big, this is the big leagues. This could convert the town from a town into a full-fledged city, maybe an urbanized city. So we want the best, you know, and we don't want to, we don't want to just follow the mandate that the state has put forward, which, in my opinion, you know, we get these grants and then you have to give a little too much. What it means, what I mean by that, they want this high-density housing, and they want it in the worst way. They're doing it to not only towns where the commuter rail goes through, but adjacent towns now, and they're all fighting. They accepted, now they're backing out and fighting this thing. So I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a high-density housing project, which nobody here is going to be happy with in the end. When you see this stuff built, when you see the land cleared, the foundations, the footings, foundations and everything laid in on these buildings, people's eyes are going to pop out because it's going to change things dramatically. And the last thing I got to, I just wanted to say was, there was a gentleman here about the DEI hiring. I say you're going to have enough to do without trying to get the criteria for a DEI hire. Just get the best person for the job, you know, the best person. No one's asking of, going in for surgery, especially neurosurgery, cardiac bypass, and asking the doctor, hey, you were DEI, did you meet the criteria here for DEI? No, you're going to, you want to find out if the guy's had 200 or 300 surgeries in his background, and is he qualified to do it? And the DEI thing is, get the best person for the job. Get the best person.
Thank you for your comments.
You're going to have all you can do with that.
Thank you. Next, name and address for the record, please.
Lynette Allen O'Chase, 60 Old Farm Road, Bridgewater. I'm here in support of the original five-person council that was elected, nominated, whatever you want to say, by the town manager as directed by our charter. I'm concerned by the 11-person council that is being discussed later on this evening that was chosen by one person. I don't understand how there can be open transparency when one person did it. I'd like to know how those people, those citizen experts were chosen because I don't remember seeing anyone asked for volunteers. I'm sure they're all qualified in their positions, but I find it concerning, and I don't know that there'd be a diversity of opinion when one person chose everyone. So I would like to see the five member that was chosen by Mr. Dutton, who unfortunately is not here, for me to thank, and I thank you all. I think you were elected by us to do the hard things, and this is a hard thing. So I think you need to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Good afternoon. Tom Praddy, 37 Bolton Place, Bridgewater. I began attending council meetings a couple of months ago because of the various serious issue of the MBTA intrusion into our downtown district and to hear what the state believes will benefit Bridgewater over what we, the citizens, know is right for our town. You see, I was a member of the planning board for a number of years and eventually its chairman, so I thought that I may understand issues that would arise better than most. But now we are faced with hiring a new town manager, so I figured I would stick around and observe for a while. Bridgewater is having an identity crisis of sorts. Although we still want to be, and most of us still believe we are a small town, we are technically defined as a city. Hiring a new town manager is and will be the most important decision this council will make, period, on how this town's future will unfold over the next 10 years. During my tenure at the planning board, just like this council, we listen to public comments during each site plan review. The difference is, the planning board is governed by strict rules and regulations set forth by our bylaws and zoning, et cetera. So although we listen to our public comments, we could not let those comments influence the decisions that we made. Tonight and in the very near future, you'll be making important decisions on who will be the acting/interim town manager, hiring the new town manager, and tonight's main issue, the makeup of the committee, who will interview the applicants and ultimately choose the best candidates out of the applicants to recommend to this council for the town manager position. You have heard from the townspeople that have been attending your meetings. You can tell we all care about what happens in our town. You can hear the passion, our wishes and suggestions. Unlike the planning board, you have the ability not only to listen to the people who elected you, but to act on their wishes. Each of us know and talk to a lot of townspeople. The suggestions that we share with you are those of people we speak with as well as our own. Please do the right thing for the future of our town and listen to its citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Praddy. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Mr. Donna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to echo similar thoughts as some of the speakers tonight. Do not question the qualifications or integrity of any of the members of the committee that were previously announced, and I realize the time sensitivity of the situation for selecting the town manager and would not want to see the process delayed any longer than necessary. However, I do think it might make sense to take a step back to ensure we have a process in place to ensure the best candidate for town manager is selected, especially now since the previous speaker noted. Bridgewater will be undergoing major changes with the MBTA zoning law, a law mandated by the state legislature, forcing towns to comply or face dire funding consequences, and have we seen with some other towns, potentially a lawsuit from the state attorney general. Personally, I'm concerned about the quality of life in Bridgewater as the state legislation plays out. I fear that Bridgewater will become another overbuilt, congested town with classrooms that are already oversized. So in my opinion, the selection of the town manager is an extremely important decision, someone who can work with town council to preserve the character of Bridgewater as best as possible. Thank you, council members, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donna.
Mr. President, can I ask a question? I'm having a hard time hearing who is coming up and their address. I don't think everybody is stating it.
Okay.
So I'm just asking for the record.
That's fine. Just make sure, did you say your name and address, John, for the record?
I'm sorry, John Galloway, 260 West House, please.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Carlton, come on up.
Beating the message, that doesn't count towards my three minutes.
[laughing].
Greetings, councilors. I wanted to clarify, I'm going to take a different bent here. I want to clarify an item for you and the public that's on item order OFY 25008. This may take me a little bit more than three minutes, so I would ask permission to complete the comment without interruption, especially since the council president recently allowed a former counselor to speak at the Citizens Forum for past three minutes, well past three minutes. Thank you. The point of this comment is to educate you and the public and to request clarification of the language of item six of order FY 2888, item six. As presented, it's confusing. I have recently received information that people are thinking differently than what is really intended. So I'll explain. The order states, "The acting town manager shall include but not be limited to six signing the purchase and sale agreement for the Hanson Farm." The word that's a problem here is the agreement. The public that I've heard from think that the Hanson's are selling the farm. They are not. As presented, as I said, it appears the town purchased the Hanson Farm. It's not intended, and therefore I wish to clarify the term agreement and request a wording change. In September 21, 2021, the town submitted a request to the, oh, by the way, I'm vice chair of the Committee Preservation Committee, an eligibility determination for use of Community Preservation Act funds to purchase a conservation restriction on the farm. The submission was based on a request from the Hanson Farm owners. The CPC eligibility determination was based on the statement to preserve, quote, "preserve the agricultural lands owned by the Hanson Farms for agriculture use through the use of a conservation restriction." The CPC determined the project was CPA-eligible. The CPC also received a letter from the Hanson's dated February 16, 2022, indicating their willingness to sell the development rights of the farm. This action is comparable to the town's purchase of the development rights for the Murray Needs Farm some 10 years ago. The project in process now for three years has languished as various steps to acquire the rights were slow to develop. The mandated town appraisal for the property was completed in late 2023. In February 2024, the CPC reserved the town's official application for CPA funding titled Hanson Farm Conservation RE., the purpose of which is to, quote, "purchase of a conservation easement of approximately 72 acres of farmland." The price and the requested conservation restriction, including an entity to hold the CR, were not included, the price was not included, were not included in this application as the agreement was not in place. Little progress was made until late July this year, until the CPC officers insisted the project move forward. Since February, we of the CPC were repeatedly told negotiations were in progress, but no details being provided. As far as we know today, the negotiations are in progress, and hopefully good progress, but it's unclear when the required details for a CPC vote on whether to recommend a purchase to the town council for appropriation will be completed and submitted to the CPC soon. Please reach out to me or the CPC chair if you need clarification of our procedures. We take all of our instructions from Mass. General 44B. Therefore, to clarify the meaning of the word agreement, in item six, I request wording from item six be clarified to include signing a purchase and sale agreement for a conservation restriction on the Hanson Farm. This will go far to clarifying the intent to the public and cause no more confusion. Thank you for your attention to this. As always, we are available for discussion on this and other CPC projects. I invite you to attend the CPC meeting tomorrow evening, as we will be updating progress on the CP's five-year plan that we're required to do every five years, and we will be scheduled, we have scheduled some focus meetings for September 13 and 23, and you're most welcome to attend. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Dr. Hunt.
Yeah, Dr. Hunt. Mrs. Hanson.
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, excuse me. My understanding is Ms. Blythe Robinson would be a part-time, if she was to be voted in as part-time. Knowing that, I respectfully ask the town council to find out, you know, what, how many hours does that mean for her? I think that's important to know if you're going to vote, so we know how many, you know, how long she'd be able, how many hours a week she can work and how many of those would be in person or whatever. I think that's important to know, especially if it's not a full-time position, if she's going to be only be able to do part-time, I think it's important to know how many hours and how many, you know, if it's 90 days up to 180 days, you know, is that going to be the same for the whole length of time? And I just would like to be introduced. I would ask if somebody could introduce her. I've never been, I don't think anybody's been formally introduced, the public, I mean, and say, "Attention, everyone, this is Ms. Robinson." I'm assuming this is you. But I think even tonight, if somebody could just have her stand up and say, "Hi, this is who she is that you're thinking about voting on," that would be important. And I have everything written down. And also what she would intend to do if she is become the acting or interim or whatever it's called manager, would she be appointing, any possibility of her wanting to appoint an assistant, any chance of her appointing assistant? And if so, how does that work for when you finally have a permanent town manager? But that should be public record now of what the intentions would be, at least that would be part of this record of how many hours are we expecting? And if it's in person, would an assistant manager, because if no one, that means she would be doing two jobs if we don't have one, but I think a permanent town manager should pick his or her own assistant manager that's good for the town. And it would be nice to have more options. I personally don't know anything about her, but it just seems like it's, but I know we would need to get somebody soon, but I think there'd be more, you know, other, anybody else out there that you'd be considering? And I am for more of not the original five that was suggested for the screening or committees. I think that needs to be revisited. So hopefully you can introduce her and we get answers to those questions that might help relieve some anxiety on some people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Mrs. Wright.
Good evening. This was something that was brought up also, Mrs. Robinson, you know, welcome. I don't know you either. I have no idea who you are and what you've done in the past. I do have some-
President, a point of order. Could we have an introduction, please, by the office?
Oh, yeah. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sandra Wright, East Street in Bridgewater. But I did have concerns about the time that she has available to the town, and I think it was brought up last night, and I think Ms. Robinson had said that it was a concern about if, you know, if she has 1,200 hours that she's able to work, we don't know how many she's already worked, and is that going to bring it down to where she's only available six hours, maybe 13 hours a week? I think there is, you know, great concern. This is too big of a town to have just a part-time person of even 25, 30 hours, never mind six or 13 hours. My other question was, you know, what kind of salary would she be paid hourly? Would she be paid a salary, you know, from what Mr. Dutton was getting? How would that all work out? But I am concerned about the hours that she can put in. There are fires every single day everywhere that we work and what we do. If she's not available, then that's not going to be good for the town. That's just not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Yes, Ms. Robinson?
Sorry, I have a question. So this citizen just referenced me in a conversation, but she actually misquoted that information. It did not come from me. So I don't know if that needs to be clarified.
When we get to into our new business, I'll, you can address it at a later time.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else for public comment? Citizens Open Forum. Going once, going twice. Oh, one more? Come on up, please. Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Linda Schmuck. I live at 15 Sunset Lane. I'm speaking here tonight as a concerned citizen on a subject that hasn't been brought up tonight. I've lived in town for 38 years, and I remember a time when the water in Bridgewater was a source of pride, the quality of the water. And our town right now is growing faster than the infrastructure can accommodate. The July 16 water resource presentation to the council was very concerning. Tonight, I implore the council to consider a moratorium on new building permits until all the state requirements for the water quality and quantity and sewer upgrades are completed. Excuse me. And I believe that the moratorium should be maintained for a minimum of two years after the town has met and financed the improvements mandated by the state. I think we've allowed developers, with the help of the planning board, the community economic development department, to take control of our town without consideration of the quality of life of the long-term citizens in Bridgewater, as the extreme costs of these remediations and improvements will be placed on the homeowners. I would like to ask that a counselor come forward to sponsor an ordinance to legislate a temporary moratorium on new building until our infrastructure can support it. And I'd also like to take this time to thank all of you for your, because I don't get up here and talk a lot, to thank you for your time. I'm really impressed with the amount of time that you put in and the amount of work that you put in for our town. I want to thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Going once, going twice. All right. Thank you for all those that came up to speak tonight. We greatly appreciate your comments.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Could I ask where our current town manager is this evening?
At this point, I'm not sure of the situation. I do not know.
Because we were told that he was going to be here tonight, for the record.
Okay. Let's see. Moving on. Discussions, we have nothing open discussion-wise tonight. We're going to jump right into some new business, and that first area of new business is order OFY 25-008, emergency measure, appointing of an acting town manager. Let me get a little background information before we jump in. I had also made some comments at my last meeting, so I want to clarify a couple of comments with that. So at our last meeting, give myself so much time. All right. So at our last meeting, I commented on the fact that Mr. Dutton would be placing acting assistant town manager Blythe Robinson in his role when he left until we can come, could we name an acting interim town manager, assuming that we could use Section 4-7 of the temporary absence clause in the admin code to do so. Upon further discussion with both the town manager and town attorney, and also hearing from the public as well, I did get a couple of emails about this, we cannot use this clause because in the final line, when the town manager returns, he is not returning. So we cannot use- So we cannot use this particular clause to, to fill the absence. Therefore, the Acting Assistant Town Manager would not have any other power of acting as a town manager unless we start this emergency measure here this evening. This is why I sponsored the order. So just to give you a definition of emergency measure, in accordance with Section 2-7B of the Home Rule Charter, an emergency measure shall be introduced in the form and manner prescribed for measures generally, except that it shall be plainly designated as an emergency measure and shall contain statements after the enacting clause declaring that an emergency exists and describing its scope and nature in clear and specific terms. The preamble, which declares and defines the emergency, shall be separately voted on and shall require affirmative votes of two-thirds of the council. So it does get into the, the order itself, a little description of, of why this is going. But I do want to summarize a little bit more about why we're going in this direction. As we all know, we're also trying to introduce an ordinance to move forward with the, the process of, of going forward with hiring anywhere from an interim town manager to an acting town manager, and just going over through the whole process in an ordinance. So not only is it going to help us now, but in the future. But it's not in place at this time. This ordinance will probably take place in 90 days, you know, hopefully we'll have it in place. So if we do go ahead with this direction, we could go in a different direction in 90 days. The council could look at additional candidates when we, if we go forward with Ms. Robinson tonight, or look to reappoint if all is going well. And our emergency order tonight also allows us to not have a two-meeting process with a typical order, because we obviously, we need to have a town manager in place effective September 5th, the day after Mr. Dutton leaves. We do need an active town manager in place to sign weekly payroll for town employees and checks for accounts payable. The town is also in the middle of five collective bargaining negotiations. We need somebody with her experience to continue this process without significant delays due to Mr. Dutton's departure, and once negotiated, an acting town manager can sign those agreements with the labor unions. We're also in the middle of executing and receiving grant monies for various projects in town, including the PNS for the conservation rights, as mentioned earlier, to the Hanson's farm, and some of that is very time-sensitive. I believe, you know, to go in this direction, Ms. Robinson has the experience to continue the various projects in town, including the new fire station project and the project deal, mobile station, which will also be coming up. The town has a variety of town dealings with to do on a day-to-day basis. We need an interim town manager in place to do that. Not to mention the start of the next budget cycle with over $70 million town budget that the town has, and again, appointments that we need to have an interim town manager to be made to the ad hoc committee if we go forward with that this evening. So those are definitely some of the, the highlights and high points. I will definitely take the advice of the, the public in adding some language to the item number six on the conservation restriction. We'll get to that in just a minute. But ultimately, I just wanted to give the public and the rest of the council just a summary of kind of where we're at and why we're doing this particular situation. We cannot not have an interim town manager in place in order for the town to continue to function on a day-to-day basis, and that's pretty much the bottom line. So what we'll, certainly we'll ask for is a roll call vote of the council, declare and define an emergency and suspend the council rules, procedure of Section 18, in order to move forward with further discussing this measure as a council.
Point of inquiry?
Yes, Ms. Allenberg.
When can motions be made, before or after?
Well, we have to declare an emergency first and suspend the council rules first, and then we'll get into-
And then we can make motions.
...the, the order itself, okay?
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Just real quick, do you mean like a motion to amend the underlying issue?
Well, a motion-
I think it depends on the motion you're looking to make.
It does, okay? And I just want to know, when is the time to make an amendment? I do not want to be shut out.
Nothing will be shut out. We just have to, have to declare an emergency first so we can get to the actual-
Motion to declare an emergency and suspend the-
Rules, okay. And a second by Ms. Strigels. Further discussion-
Yes, through you to the town attorney. On the public record, since I was told I can't talk to you anymore, I'd like to ask, can the interim Assistant Town Manager function in the role and do these duties?
As it stands currently, without any appointment by the current town manager under Section 4.7?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Point of, point of inquiry, can I address the comments from public comments earlier as it pertains to this topic?
When we get into discussion under the order, we can bring that up then.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Strigels.
Is, when is the appropriate time to have Ms. Robinson speak about her qualifications?
Once we get into-
I do think that that's definitely important.
Yes, no, we'll-
She had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago.
We're going to get into that when we have discussions of the, of the order. Ms. McGrath, you got a question?
Yeah, I have a question. It says the emergency shall be separately voted on and shall require the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the town council. Why are you suspending that when we need that to pass an emergency?
We have to suspend the rules. It's a combination of suspending the council rules and declaring, defining an emergency.
But it's contradicting right here in the emergency, in the charter saying that you need two-thirds to declare emergency.
That's right. You, that's what you're voting on currently?
That's what we're voting on right now.
Right.
We haven't had a vote yet on that.
So then why are you suspending?
In order to eliminate the need for a second reading. We can take the action tonight, and it will be final.
Right.
So what if, so would the vote be for only five, the majority, or we still have to have six?
On, on the, on the emergency or on the motion itself, two separate votes?
On the emergency.
The emergency requires six affirmative votes.
Okay.
Yes. And the emergency and suspending rules are one in the same vote. They're saying by declaring it as an emergency, you're actually suspending your rules, which is accurate.
But we can vote, we still need a six.
You need six votes to declare it as an emergency.
An emergency.
All right, I just wanted to clarify.
If that fails, then it would be counted as this is the first reading, essentially.
We have to wait another week, which could delay-
I just want it to be clarified.
Yeah, that's fine. You understand? Thank you. All right.
Another point of clarification, if I may-
Ms. Allenberg, yeah?
-ask a question to town council. The ability to sign paychecks for the employees of the town and to pay the bills of the town, can those be carried out with an acting town manager?
I don't believe so, because it doesn't say that anywhere in our charter, which I think is why 4-6 required you all to make that appointment forthwith. It's very clear that they want you to make that appointment quickly. Likely what would happen is if you do not declare it an emergency and do not vote in an interim, you're either going to have to have another special meeting to vote another one, or I'll likely have to file for a declaratory judgment in court to fill the gap.
Okay, that's very interesting. So you would be suing the council for a declaratory judgment? Interesting. Okay.
No, that's not what we've been doing.
That's not, that's not what I said.
No.
A declaratory judgment is an action by which you ask the court to weigh in because an actual controversy exists. The controversy in this circumstance would be that under the charter, it says you all are to forthwith-
Yes.
...appoint an interim town manager. If you don't do that, there is no mechanism under a temporary appointment. So because that mechanism doesn't exist within the charter itself, we'd be at, we've done this before, I'm, I'm sure you know historically.
So the search committee could do this, though?
No, this has nothing to do with the search committee.
Under, under the charter, I'd-
Could make the appointment.
Because the, the gap is not filled, I would be asking the court, please tell us, court, because the charter doesn't speak to this, what is the proper approach for us to take because the council has not put someone in place?
And thus, there is ambiguity.
We're asking, we're asking-
You are saying there is ambiguity. Is that correct?
Ms. Allenberg, he's-
I believe I answered the question.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Hold on. Mr. Lindy.
I guess the question is for you, Mr. President. Is the only path to appoint Ms. Robinson or are, are any other people under consideration? There were resumes that were submitted-
We don't have a process in place to consider any of the candidates right now. This is what we're trying to work on. So I really, our only choice right now is to go with Ms. Robinson for the first 90 days, and then at 90 days, if our ordinance is in place, then the potential for looking at other candidates at that time might be available.
I would like to make a motion-
Ms. Allenberg, it's out of order.
...which I understand will come later, but just-
All right, let's finish on the discussion of just declaring an emergency if we could, and then we'll get into discussion of the order.
Well, yes, an emergency for 14 days. We make a shorter appointment.
We cannot do that. It doesn't apply. That, that part, the temporary will not work because we're not, Mr. Dutton is not coming back.
We, we could, you all have the authority to fire the town manager, right? You hire and you fire. So what I would say to that, and this may ease your concerns, Ms. Allenberg, is that even if you did an appointment, first, we have to negotiate a contract thereafter. I know there's, there's questions about what the salary would be, and you all would have to be content with what that is. Then secondly, you would have the ability, likely, I would guess, that Ms. Robinson would be an at-will employee, and you could likely fire her if that didn't work by a majority vote of the council. So I think, I think these are very temporary appointments. I, I think the max you can actually do are in three-month increments only twice under the charter.
That being said, any other councils, any questions? Just dealing with the defined emergency and suspension of rules, because we need to move forward on our vote on that.
I'd like to call the question.
You'd like to what?
Call the question.
Regarding?
No, he, he wants to move the previous question.
Move the question, thank you.
Other words, take a vote on it.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Well, first, you have to now vote to move the previous question, which requires a two-third vote.
Okay, so let's have a vote to move the question. Roll call vote. Josh.
Mr. McKinnon.
No.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Allenberg?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Thank you.
And your debate on the question.
Hold on, I just got confused on what we were even voting on.
Well-
Mr. McKinnon, we're making a vote to move the question to vote for the emergency of the, of the town manager. Do you want to change your vote based on that information? Is this just to move the question to vote on the emergency?
So we're going to go vote on the emergency at now?
We're just vote, right, we're just-
It just ends the discussion.
It's ending the further discussion so we can just move to a vote?
So I want to-
Unless you want to further discuss it.
So I vote yes. I think I just voted wrong, because I didn't understand what we were voting on, because we're all dithering back and forth over it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. So that's a yes vote for Mr. McKinnon?
It's six in favor.
Okay, so it's six in favor, that's two-thirds vote. We can move forward with the actual vote on the emergency.
At this time-
There can no, there can be no more debate on it. It has to just be a roll call vote.
Roll call vote to declare an emergency.
Pardon, point of order?
No, I'm-
I asked you if I could make motions after that first vote, and you said I could.
We're declaring the emergency first. We haven't even gotten to the order yet.
I would like to make an amendment to-
You're not ready for that yet.
You can't, you can't. There's, the precedent is to move the question. Mr. Lindy made a motion to move the question. He had the floor. It was a two-third vote in the affirmative. The question is moved. You have to vote on the emergency first.
So now we are actually just voting on the actual emergency and suspending the council rules. Roll call vote, please, Mr., Josh.
Mr. McKinnon? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go the alternate way, yeah, please.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Allenberg?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Six in favor, three against.
Okay. So the council has now declared the, and defined the emergency and suspended council rules, allowing us to move forward in discussion of the order that's before us now. So in regards to that, I would ask for a motion and a second for discussion for the emergency measure so we can move forward with further discussion of the order. Do I have a motion? Do so.
Motion. Second.
And a second, Mr. Chase? All right. So that being said, to start off the discussion of the order, I would like to have Ms. Robinson come on up and to the podium and introduce herself to everyone and give us a little background of her, her experience and what she can do for the town at this time.
Thank you, everyone. Hello, my name is Blythe Robinson. I am a lifelong local government manager. I started out in local government in Maryland after receiving my master's degree, and I have worked my way up to being a town manager or the equivalent in Massachusetts in three different communities. I've actually worked in four different states in my career. Started out as a budget analyst and in the trenches doing that sort of work, and, and worked my way up to assistant before coming to, back to Massachusetts, because I'm from Wayland originally, to work as the town manager in Upton as their first manager when they changed form of government to the town of Wellesley, to the town of Norfolk, and then I retired from full-time work after that and joined a small consulting firm. Because I still love working in local government, I just like doing it in a different, different I've also, you might be interested, the size of communities, everything from a small town of Lincoln, Massachusetts, which when I was there was about 5,000 population, up to the city of Cleveland, which was about 350,000 people, and different forms of government, not only what's typical in Massachusetts, Board of Select Board and Town Meeting, but also council manager forms of government in both Maryland and Connecticut. Since retiring in 2022 from full-time work, I've worked in 23 different communities, including here in Bridgewater, assisting with managing the High Street Dam and Bridge Project grants for the town, and then assisting with human resources needs on a part-time basis earlier this year. The type of work I've been doing has been in budgeting, human resources, grants, applying for them in administration, and interim work. I've been the interim Human Resources Director in the town of Belmont. I was also here for about six weeks in that role in February and March, and I was the interim Public Works Superintendent in Randolph for about four months. I'm glad I paid attention to public works over the years, because I'd always managed the Public Works Director. I hadn't actually been the Public Works Director. But what I've learned over the years is that paying attention to all those details makes you able to be, to step into a role and quickly get up to speed and help with situations that come up. Other things that I've just worked on throughout my career that, you know, will come up here in Bridgewater, and they come up in many communities, which are, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. President, negotiating union contracts with all sorts of unions, developing operating and capital budgets from small to large, managing large projects. I've managed the oversight of building a new police station, a fire station, a school expansion, and renovating a town hall. Working with financial markets, we have a bond issue next week here in Bridgewater to pay for the, to borrow the money to pay for the fire station, which is very critical so we can make sure we can keep that project on track. And managing through crises, you never know when a crisis is going to take place in a community. Earlier this year, we had an issue here in Bridgewater with low water levels in the tanks. It's a, it's a big issue, and so those come up, and you have to be ready for them. Other types of issues I've dealt with are obviously the COVID pandemic. That was a difficult situation. Employee injuries and accidents, lawsuits, significant budget cuts and budget overrides, a successful one, I might add. Purchases of property, conservation restrictions like Mr. Hunt mentioned as well. I've heard that the, my work schedule is concerned for people, so I wanted to make sure I addressed that. There is correct that as a retiree, there's a limit to the number of hours you can work, but one thing I've enjoyed of being consultant is I don't work full-time, so I have hours to be able to devote to Bridgewater. I think it would be important to be in the office at least three full days a week and it would be important to be in the office at least three full days a week, and also have time to attend council meetings, perhaps a CPC meeting, the meetings that need to happen. I well understand that we're a 24/7 operation. We don't stop, you know, you turn your water tap on, it works all day long. And so crises happen. When they happen, issues come up. For me, I would devote 30 to 35 hours a week to the town, and I'm going to make sure that, on my watch, that, that things get taken care of with department heads, with, in concert with the council, and the town's needs are met. The clock on how many hours a retiree can work resets in January, so if it's your choice that I'm still here assisting you at the turn of the year, I could devote more time to the, to the job, and I'm excited to do that. In terms of what it would be like, and how I see the, the interim manager role going, you had changed the first time here in about, in 12 years. That's different for you as the council and it's different for the staff. They've gotten used to how things get done and, and how Mr. Dutton ran the organization. So I need to, I've already started to learn that since I've been here over the summer, but I need to assure people that that's how we're going to continue to work, that this is not the time to change. I want to focus them on making sure that the day-to-day operations continue to roll along as they have, and we deal with issues as they come up. So I'd start with a department head meeting to make sure that everyone understands that, and that I'm not planning to make any significant changes, not planning to come in and change staff. You know, if somebody decided to leave a position, well, we're going to work to fill it. We're going to keep the operation rolling along, and we're going to make sure that the things that the town does on a regular schedule every year are attended to. Upcoming is those union negotiations, which are critical to this year's budget, as well as the budget we're going to plan for FY '26, and that the budget season starts this fall with the capital and operating budgets. And if I'm here to hand that off to the next manager, that it's in a good place for them to be able to get up to speed quickly and help you through the process to be able to pass that in approximately April. And then I'm going to continue to have regular meetings, the department heads, as Mr. Dutton has, to just make sure I'm on top of any issues that are going on and reassure them that I'm here to support them. You, you're lucky, not lucky, you, you built a great staff here. Really, they're solid people who understand their roles, and I see it as my role to support them and continuing to have them do their best work. In terms of the vacancy in the assistant town manager role, I, I would, to Ms. Hanson's question earlier, I would not want to fill that with a permanent position. I think that is a choice that the new manager, whoever that is, makes, and so I would not do that, though I fully recognize that with Mr. Dutton leaving and if I, you know, move into the role he filled, there's going to be a gap of, of hours that, that people are able to work. I think what's important to work out between myself and the council is what are your expectations? If it's keeping everything moving forward and work getting done as it should, that's ideal. I don't think it's a time to start new projects or new initiatives that I wouldn't be able to finish, or that a new manager might advise you to go in a different direction, or you may want to. So I think we just need to come to consensus about what that, those priorities are so I can make sure that I'm on top of them, and, and we'll see how that goes. If it's not meeting your needs, then we can talk about whether we need some assistance on a part-time basis in the assistant role on an interim basis, so that the work of the town is, gets done. So I think in the, what's coming up in the next, you know, few months that we need to, that I would need to pay attention to, as I've mentioned, negotiating and recommending settlements of those union contracts. Obviously, those are decision of the council, what those are at the end of the day, but in order to sign a tentative agreement, I'd need the authority to do that. Working with finance to kick off and get the budget for FY '26 underway, completing the, the CR for Hanson Farm. That's, I think that's coming along, as I understand it. Managing outstanding litigation, every community has some that needs to be attended to with the town council, and supporting the major projects that are happening. There are a lot of things happening, good things happening here. The fire station is great, it's exciting to drive by it and see its, you know, its broken ground and it's moving forward. And the bond sale is next Wednesday for that. The wastewater treatment plant, someone mentioned water and sewer, that's another critical project. Closing out the High Street project, keeping my eye on the Vision to Reality project are all things that need support. Those are my prepared remarks, but I'm happy to take questions.
No, that's fine. Yes, I will definitely ask if there's any councils have any questions for Ms. Robinson. Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, from this Ms. Robinson. First, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your patience and grace while you've witnessed a very anxious-filled, tenuous time for us, and so appreciate the work that you've been doing behind the scenes in terms of helping with, with HR, budgeting, et cetera. Your experience is very helpful. I want to reiterate what, a couple of key points that you said, just to make sure that we continue to reiterate that these have been words from your mouth directly.
Mm-hmm.
Because there has been a lot of speculation in this community, a lot of guessing, and so that first part about work schedule, because, you know, understandably, with one person being in acting and with, potentially with the assistant town manager role being vacant, if you were to be in this role, there is concern around capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So I appreciate that you did stay three full days a week.
Mm-hmm.
And you're, in your mind, envisioning 30 to 35 hours per week.
Correct. And what I should have mentioned also is, you know, one thing that, and not a lot of good things came out of the pandemic, and one of them was that remote work is possible and, and acceptable.
Right.
And so being able to, you know, I'm going to look at my email every day, because I'm the nerd who does that. I just can't help it.
Yeah.
Yeah, can't help it. I know my husband's watching this meeting. He's probably rolling his eyes.
Yeah.
But being available remotely, if a meeting has to happen because something is going on, we're going to have the meeting.
Right.
Just.
Expected flexibility.
Expect flexibility.
Right. At this point, I would also like to take a moment to address one of the public comments from, from Ms. Wright. It was actually misquoted, or misattributed, I should say. The speculation around your hours and the numbers that she threw out were actually a speculation that was provided by a former counselor who is male. So those numbers and the speculation did not come from me. So I just wanted to clarify that for both yourself as well as members who are watching this. And, you know, I think a lot of things were shared, a lot of conversation was had, so I can certainly understand if there was, you know, a misattribution, but I did want to clarify, I did not speculate on hours. I wanted to ask directly tonight. The other piece that I also want to punctuate again is your statement around, in this role, you do not have any intention. I asked you that when you and I had a one-on-one. I've asked Mr. Dutton that, and every single answer has been consistent with, you are here to prioritize all the things you talked about, budget, union contracts, the CR for Hanson Farm, managing outstanding, you will be plenty busy, and your intent is not to hire a permanent assistant town manager, because that is the right and the, the preferred duty of a full-time permanent town manager.
Correct. Yes.
Great, thank you. So I want to highlight those two points, so thank you for that. I do have a question about budgeting. Actually, in general, I would love to hear from you. This, these kinds of roles are incredibly diverse. You have to have so many different skillsets from managing large distributed personnel to labor negotiations to litigation, et cetera, and then certainly municipal budgeting. Where do you feel like your top strengths are?
I do love budgeting.
Good, because we have about $75 million that's going to need to be managed.
I, I like seeing a, a community's vision come to reality. I realize I'm just kind of parroting the, the strategy, but seeing the fire station happen after so many years of, of it not being inadequate, that's exciting to me. Seeing a community be able to break new ground with, with grants and other opportunities that help it be more efficient. I was here, when I was here in March, I knew we were talking about needing a conservation agent, and I happened to be looking at the job ads on the MMA, because I was just always interested in what's happening out there, and I saw that Halifax is looking for a conservation agent, and we were thinking about part-time here. And knowing that it's, having had to hire a conservation agent in the past, I went in to see Mr. Dutton. I said, hey, did you know that they're looking? They're right next door. We have a good relationship with them. Why, you know, maybe you would like to talk to them about sharing that role? Guess what? We're going to be sharing that role. We are finishing up the interviewing for that, and it looks like we'll have a hire soon. And that's, to me, that's exciting. We're going to be able to do it more efficiently with someone who's excited to have a full-time job with benefits than just a part-time position. To me, so it's a win all day long, with a community that we have a good relationship with. So that kind of thing, I love.
Great. And you've worked in so many different municipal settings. I'm curious about your experience working with a regional school district, and particularly with the budget process. I'm just going to be, I have been vocal about this publicly, privately, to anyone who's willing to listen to me. I, I really would look forward to, I think, would be a stronger relationship with the district and understanding. Anyway, yeah, so let's talk more about your experience, though.
So I've worked with two different regional districts. In Upton, it was the Muck, Menon-Upton Regional School District, so Menon-Upton together, a two-town district. Also there, the high school for that group was right across the street from the Regional VOTEC School of nine communities, so we had two high schools on the same street, and that was a nine-member community, uh, group. So slightly different dynamics. It's a little different when it's just two, because, you know, you, you both really have to agree on what the budget's going to be and what the school committee is willing to accept. If you don't, that's an issue, and I ran into that in, in Menon-Upton where Upton passed an override to fund the budget and Menon did not. And the school committee almost called a district-wide meeting to pass the budget and make the other community pay what they didn't want to. So don't want to have that happen. And in Norfolk, we shared a regional school district with Plainville and, Rentham, sorry, three-town district for middle and high school. So I think it's just, it's building the relationship with them about what each community can afford, but also understanding what the school's needs are. And, and it's a complicated formula, how you fund a regional district, what the state provides, what the communities provide, and, I mean, the, the formula is very complicated. But at the end of the day, most people care that, about quality education, so how can, within what each community can afford to do, how can you support that district for the, on the, on the kids' behalf?
Great. I definitely have more questions, but I'm going to now pass it along because I'd love to hear from other councils.
Mr. Lindy, you have a question you'd like to ask?
Thank you for your presentation. I just want to clarify one point in, in terms of the hours and the three full days a week, 30 to 35. Did I hear you correctly that some will be remote and some will be in person?
I would plan to be in the office three days a week. It's up for debate which three days are the best for, for Bridgewater, and then remote, you know, other.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Robinson, I have more of an ask than a question for you, and I think for me, and this is something I've been vocal about at our town meetings, I think this town has a communication issue.
Mm-hmm.
And by that, I mean, I think this town struggles to communicate with its citizens. I think it struggles to communicate with its committees and its boards. And as you mentioned, this conservation agent with Hanson tonight, I think that was a great example of, of things that should be shared to the appropriate boards and with the town council. And so if you do, you know, if your appointment is ratified tonight, I would ask that, even if you're here for a short period of time, that if you could keep that in mind, that communication
Mm-hmm.
has been an issue.
Okay.
And I would love to see that improve, and I think it would do numbers for this town if we could improve just the slightest bit of communication issues that have existed for a long time. And so, again, I would just ask that of you if that goes through. I will certainly keep you accountable to that, but I think that's one of the glaring issues for me.
I understand.
Thank you. Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes, I have a few questions. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson, for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. The union negotiations, they're in arbitration now, is that correct?
They're not in arbitration, as far as we know, but I, I think asking about contracts probably is a executive session matter.
Okay, okay.
Until, until they're signed, and then you can ask whatever.
Well, my question actually was, is how long has the process been going on for the fire at police?
We really haven't gotten started with either of them. We've got a, a planning meeting with police week after next. Met with the library, I think, but they really have not started. I think part of this whole transition has slowed those things down, but it's.
Do you know how long they've been without contracts?
The contracts came up for renewal on June 30th of this year, so not long. And it's not, and, and please understand that that's fairly typical. It's ideal, it's obviously ideal if all contracts could be settled before the year starts. Doesn't, it very often doesn't happen that way.
One other question. In terms of you not appointing an assistant, if you were to be put in this position, would you put that in writing to the council?
Sure.
Well, it's, again, it's her decision if she's in the position, if she needs it at some point in time. She might not know at this point in time if she needs help or not, so, you know, that, that's her decision at that point in time. Any other questions from council members?
Through you to the town attorney, so that can't be put in writing. Is that correct?
I'm, I think the questions about employment right now of other people are important because she has not been appointed as the town manager yet, so I think they're appropriate in the interviewing context. They are not appropriate once she becomes the town manager. As you know, under the charter, the council has no purview over employment matters. I think she stated it on the record pretty clearly, but, and you all, as I said earlier, can hold her accountable, right? You all are her boss, so if you decide to appoint her. But, yeah, I, I don't believe that the town manager should be putting anything employment-wise, any promises to the town council in writing, because that's a charter violation, clearly.
Do you have a point, yeah, question, Ms. Ellenberg?
Uh, yes. You were talking about consensus of priorities. I know I've been talking to a lot of citizens, and the form-based code is pretty much downgrading Bridgewater. There has been conversations with people who are builders in town and so forth that we need to upscale Bridgewater. The idea has been proposed, for example, that Perkins and so forth be made into luxury senior housing. Now, that is a different agenda than the form-based code, which is for low-income housing. Okay? That's a different path that our town would be on. How would you feel about if a new council, because in six months, people are up for reelection, there may or may not be a different council?
Point of clarification, the form-based code is not, is simply zoning guidelines.
For development.
For development. It is not intended for, for low-income housing. We have had multiple meetings. It has been on public record. I would like to reiterate, it is not to design low-income housing. The point of contention from the community has been the concern around the number of stories of the buildings. The form-based code actually was to ensure that the building facades and the abutting to the, the main roadways would actually make it look more pleasing than other communities have executed.
And the number of units is an issue.
Correct, which is only available in one site right now, if a developer were interested.
Right, so the number of units is.
Ms. Ellenberg, well, let's not get off topic here. Let her, she's making a point of information.
A point of clarification around what the design of the code is for. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
And I have a question. Yes.
For, for the interim town manager right now.
So how would you feel about a change of direction in the middle of your tenure?
Well, if it's six months from now, it would be after my tenure.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg.
Ninety days, ninety days, okay.
All right. Any other councils have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Rob.
I just have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to utter what my fellow counselor, Ms. Robinson, said about your grace under pressure. I've had the opportunity to speak to you one-on-one. I've watched you sit in meetings where you haven't even been able to be given the opportunity to speak, where people are speaking on behalf of you. Not always the truth, and I just want to say thank you for still sitting in that seat and giving us an opportunity to potentially have someone that is fully capable of doing the job.
May I just add a word?
Yes, please, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. And, but more, I just wanted to say, what you're working through right now is, is very typical. It, it may feel a bit chaotic, because, you know, some of you are newer to the council. This happens in communities, and it's, it's okay. You will work through it. And so if I I, or whoever you choose to put in this role, could help you make sure that the day-to-day is taken care of quietly, without, without a lot of drama or praise, so that the community's meet, needs are met, and you can make the best decision you make for who's going to be this next manager, that would be, that would be great, so.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and I thank you for coming up and speaking in front of the public and the council as well. I'll just conclude, I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you, and, and just say my piece to the council that I think we're very fortunate that we do have someone of Ms. Robinson's background and experience that we could put in this position at, at this point in time, with her background in budgeting and, and, and all the leadership roles she's had over the thirty years of, of government work. She would be a fine person to help steady the ship over the next ninety days, possibly one hundred and eighty days. Mr. Chase had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Blythe Anderson as the, as the acting town manager.
It's Robinson. I think you said Anderson.
Yes.
No problem.
I second.
And we have a second, Ms. Robinson. For discussion, any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Allenberg?
Yes, thank you. So, it is definitely for the ninety days with the possibility of one hundred and eighty days, but not renewal, is, is that, in, in terms of clarification?
According to the charter, well, according to this order, it's for the first period of ninety days, with the appointment to be reviewed after that period, but the charter allows for another ninety-day period, but we'll need an acting town manager if we haven't had the possibility of putting a permanent person in place. But the charter basically gives us one hundred and eighty days to, to get a new person in place.
And are we having the condition of a person not going from a temporary to a permanent position because the search committee is doing so, or what?
No, this, this, this interim hire is not for a, a permanent role. It's, it's not on the table.
Okay.
Mr. Lindy?
On that point, does that mean Robinson is not going to be a candidate for the permanent town manager?
Correct.
Okay? And we also only have one choice to vote tonight, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
I just have a quick comment, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, please.
Thank you. And I'll make it really quick, because I know emotions on the floor, but I'd just like to say that I think, I would like to acknowledge that the fact that we had to bring it to an emergency order with one candidate is, I wouldn't maybe use the term failure, but it's not a good process for Bridgewater, and it's unfortunate that we're in the situation that we're in. I think Blythe is a great individual, I've also met with her. I think tonight's presentation answered a lot of outstanding questions, so thank you again for answering those questions. But I'd just like to say that I, I acknowledge we're in an unfortunate position with one candidate in an emergency order, and I hope this gets addressed in the ordinance that we'll discuss later, which I'm presenting, that the town council will never have to go through this process again, but for the past forty-five days, I think we've all been kind of flailing, flailing around, trying to figure this out, and hopefully that ends tonight with the ordinance that'll be talked about later.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'll just note, I would, you know, based on a comment that was made, if we want to have a motion, just to add the term to item six in the order, signing a purchase and sale agreement for the conservation restriction for Hanson Farm. If I can get a, a motion, a second to get that, is, Mr. Chase and Ms. Striggles, just before we vote on the order as a whole.
I would just point out, I mean, that's technically a hundred percent accurate, it's a conservation restriction.
Yeah.
But that's in negotiations, I, I don't, I'm not sure you even definitely need that. I mean, we, we have to see what happens with that.
Okay, that's fine. I just, you know, wanted to make it clear that it wasn't for purchasing the farm, but it's for a conservation restriction.
Correct.
All right. So, we have a motion, a second. Can I just get a general vote for that, that edit? All those in favor, please signify by saying.
I think we need a roll call for Brad.
Oh, we need a roll call for Brad, okay. Roll call on that amendment.
The roll, is this on just the edit?
Just the edit. Just the edit.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Allenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Now, moving forward, the actual order to emergency appointment of Blythe Robinson to the acting town manager. We have a motion and a second. Can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Allenberg?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Thank you, seven in favor, two against.
Thank you. All right, thank you, council, and thank you, Ms. Robinson, and I look forward to working with you in the interim role. All right, so, moving forward to order OFY twenty-five dash zero-zero-nine, Town Manager Search Preliminary Screening Ad Hoc Committee. Let's see, got the right piece of paper here. Again, bringing this forward from what we had discussed in the past, again, hearing, you know, public comments, doing continued investigation on ad hocs, most communities' ad hocs in this situation are, are based on select boards, not necessarily town councils, where, again, the town council does have the hiring and firing ability of the town manager. The last time we hired Mr. Dutton, it was a four-member ad hoc committee made up of council members. This one, we are stating we're looking to have a five-member screening ad hoc committee, shall be no more than four members of the town council and one member, Bridgewater resident of the school committee. Once again established, this ad hoc committee would determine the method to acquire candidates, for example, using or hiring a, a search firm, use of MMA, et cetera, to include screening of town manager applicants and providing the town council with anywhere, you know, it says top three, but could be from three to five, I think we'll be addressing that in the ordinance. Again, this ad hoc committee is basically a conduit for the council to get interested candidates in front of us for an interview process. The, the search firm will be doing most of the work, they'll be getting the candidates, but they're going to be meeting with us, they're going to be meeting with the public. We'll be having public sessions to getting public input for what the town is looking for in a town manager. They will take that information and look at all the candidates that they have available and give us their top eight to ten, or however many number they're looking at. The ad hoc committee will take those applications, and they're just applications, they're not meeting with any individuals in person, and picking out the top three to five best candidates on paper, and those candidates will come in front of the town council, okay? Again, it's also going to be a public process, public will see it, it'll be in front of the town council. I do think a lot of people are putting a lot of weight, huge amount of weight, on the ad hoc, and the ad hoc isn't doing as much as you think that it is. Most of the work is being done by the council, okay? So, I do want to just stress that those are the biggest, you know, actions of the town, of the ad hoc committee. Now that we have an interim town manager in place, now we'll be able to have some appointments made to that ad hoc, once it's, you know, been approved.
Motion?
Hold on a second. So, that being said, I will actually ask for a motion to approve this order and a second for discussion. So, so moved. Mr. Chase with a, and a second by Ms. Striggles. Open for discussion, Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Allenberg first.
Yes, I would like to open for discussion. I have been talking to many citizens from many places. Now, the point was made that this was a single appointment, that is not true, members of the citizens committee were consulted on this group of citizen experts. I would point out, everybody here is retired.
What are we, what are we addressing right now? We're just actually having discussion on making a five-person ad hoc committee?
Yes, and I'm having.
Asking about any specific names?
Well, okay. I am making a motion for an eleven-member committee.
Well, the motion on the table first is for a five-member, so if that five-member gets voted down, then we'd have the potential for a, a motion for an eleven-person.
So, my question, I think you answered it already, it's a five-member committee with no names submitted?
No, because the appointment is made by the town manager.
So, the previous names that were mentioned are.
That was, that would be, again, that was Mr. Dutton, we did not have this order in place.
I, I do have a question, is Mr. Dutton still the town manager till the fourth of September?
Till the fourth of September, correct.
So, when would these appointments be?
They'll have to come at our next meeting.
So, the outgoing person makes the appointment?
No. Ms. Allenberg, you don't have the floor. What's your question, Mr. Lindy?
No, that, I, you answered my question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Ms. McGrath?
Yeah, I was going to speak to Mr. Dutton, because I know he wants to have a school committee member because of the school budget.
Well, again, I've introduced this, so I've wanted.
I can speak to you, then?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, so this is, this doesn't make sense, since Governor Haley has already given her estimated amount that each town will receive through chapter seventy, and Bridgewater has the FY twenty-twenty-five budget estimates done, and the federal funding is usually eight percent. So, I would prefer to see an administrator from the school system placed on the ad hoc committee. I have been looking at the statistics for our students. Last year, the data showed that a group of students had a twelve-point-five percent dropout rate in their senior year. There are many other high rates that either match the district rates or come pretty close to it, and it's concerning. We need communication between the schools principals and the town manager. The town council should be informed about these issues, so we can work with the schools in helping students' needs, whether this is paying for a program, social workers, or partnering with the BSU for tutors or mentors. So, I'd rather have an administrator from the school system rather than the budget, because we pretty much already have an idea of what the budget's going to be.
Well, an administrator doesn't necessarily have to, would, the administrator would have to live in the town of Bridgewater, we're looking to make, get a Bridgewater resident.
Well, I mean, there's three schools, so, I mean, we could put the name, you know, all we have to do is call the principal, the schools will be open and ask if somebody in the administration could become on the committee.
Well, again, I think the simpler way of going is potentially just a Bridgewater member of the Bridgewater School Committee, I'm not quite understanding why you're going with an administrator.
Because they know, they concern themselves with the statistics of the students, which are suffering.
Mr. President, a point of order, if I may.
Mr. Chase?
The order before us makes no provision for how the committee will be constituted.
It says that.
In terms of, in terms of specific personality, so I, I, I think what we should be focusing on right now is the question of the advisability of the committee as presented here.
It states one member of the school committee that is a resident of the town.
Right, now, we're just looking for one member from the school committee, that's a Bridgewater resident.
So, I'm just requesting, we have one, instead of that, we have one from the administrator that knows the statistics of our students that live in Bridgewater.
As opposed to a school committee member?
Right, because we pretty much, I mean, you can, the budget's already been set up, estimated, of how much, so I don't see the importance of that, where the more importance of is the statistics of our students. I mean, a twelve-point-five dropout rate is concerning.
I, I don't want to interrupt your debate, but I just want to clarify the motion that's actually pending, because it's, it's getting a little, is the motion that was made, the motion to keep this at council level, I just, I, I'm not sure I heard the motion.
Oh, well, the mercy, yeah, well, actually, this particular, the order itself has to go to rules and procedures first.
So, it, so what is the motion?
We're not acting on it this evening, so the motion just was a motion.
To refer?
To refer to rules, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that earlier.
Okay, yeah, I, I just didn't hear procedurally what the motion was.
So, just right, so the, the first part of this order is to go to rules and procedures, so, again, as a classic order, it needs to be handled twice.
So, is there, is there a motion?
My, my fault, right.
Is there a motion and a second?
We do have a motion for Mr. Chase and a second for Ms. Striggles, to put it just out for debate, but again, this is to move it to rules and procedures from here, we're not taking action on this this evening. Ms. Robinson?
Mr. President, if, if it's okay, if we could indulge perhaps Counselor McGrath's legitimate question.
You don't have to indulge me.
Well, I, I would love to actually hopefully provide some context. So, I think one of the, you know, I did not propose that originally, but for me, I thought it made sense because of the fact that the only purview that we have as a council and as a town administration team with the school district is actually budget. So, we don't have the ability, similarly, we don't have the ability to get insight or ask questions of administrators of the school district, or principals, et cetera, et cetera. We only contribute money to the budget. So, hence why, because the school committee has purview over that and, and approves the budget, I believe that that is a valid reason for it to be a school committee member versus perhaps a principal or some other administrator. So, I just wanted to provide.
I just saw where we control the budget, if there is a problem and they need help with these students, then we should be advised of that. The budget pretty much does itself, and they put it together and bring it, but how can we budget for extra help if we don't know about the students' needs?
So, the, that is the responsibility of the superintendent and the school committee to bring us that detailed information.
And that's why I'd like to see them, have a conversation with them, as on the ad, on this.
Well, again, this, again, this.
This is just my recommendation, you said a debate?
That's fine.
And I'm recommending that.
And that's fine, so what we'll do is that this will go to rules and procedures when it comes back for a second reading at our next meeting, if there's a proposed amendment that you'd like to make, we could vote on that at that time.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Lindy had a question, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Murphy.
So, just a point of information.
Yes.
When they're picking a school superintendent for the BR Regional School District, I sincerely doubt that any of us as councilors would be asked to be on that committee. I don't think there's any precedent for it, I kind of agree with what Ms. McGrath is saying, and I, I just don't know why this is the case, the way it's written.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
I just had a procedural question, so if, if we're not making amendments to the order, or, yes, to the order this evening, we're referring to rules and procedures.
Right.
On the second reading, if an amendment is made or proposed and accepted, does the order go back to a first reading again?
No, we could act on it at that point in time.
Okay, even with the amendments?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy, Ms. Lindy?
Question for you through the town attorney. So, at rules and procedures, there are three members of the Rules and Procedures Committee.
Yeah.
Can we as councilors attend that meeting?
If you post it.
Aren't all those meetings posted, anyway?
I, no, you would post it as a town council meeting as well, and you would just say, just to make sure you're complying with open meeting law, you would just do a one-line.
If not, there couldn't not be one, one additional council there, or you'd have a forum.
So, I'm officially asking for that.
Okay, so if rules and procedures to review this.
It's good practice, anyway, if you all feel like you're going to go to a committee meeting and everyone's going to be there discussing matters that will come before the town council, it's just safe for you to, to post it as a, as a town council meeting.
Thank you.
Where do we post it, online?
You post it in the same way you post all your meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions from councilors? Seeing none, so I'll ask for a roll call vote to move this to rules and procedures. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Allenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath.
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you.
Point of clarification?
Ms. Ellenberg.
Question. So now, after this first reading, amendments can be considered, is that correct?
Rules and procedures will render a decision on how it's written, and then it'll come back to council, and if there's any amendments at that point in time that counselors want to make, then that can be brought up.
Well, an amendment has already been proposed and is on the agenda now, I would ask that it be placed on the agenda again for our next meeting, thank you.
I believe that's...
You could move, you, they can move to amend now, if it, if it fails, it, it would become a problem to bring it back up again, but, yeah, so you could move a motion to amend.
And then the amended motion would go to rules and committee, if that's correct?
Right, if it's allowed, right.
If the people vote for it.
The amendment would go there for consideration by the committee, that's right.
Okay.
But if it fails, it falls under, right.
So the question is, do the counselors listen to citizens?
Ms. Ellenberg, so if you want to make a motion, or?
I would like to make a motion, and I do believe I'm entitled to a bit of commentary here and there, anyway.
Unless you recognize you do not have the floor, but now you have the floor, so what's your motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. My motion is to accept the 11-member ad hoc search committee instead.
All right, that's fine, so you're making a motion, do you have a second?
I'll make a second for discussion.
Second for discussion, all right.
May I discuss?
Any further discuss, yeah, please, discuss.
Thank you. Everyone here is retired, they're not on the payroll, that means they don't have a conflict of interest. Everyone here has been recommended by citizens at a citizens group, so it's not an individual decision. Everyone here has special civilian expertise, whether it's banking, accounting, development, real estate, community preservation, et cetera. So these are all people without conflict of interest, which also have special expertise. I would ask this committee to be sensible and put people who want to volunteer, who don't have a conflict of interest, and who have special expertise, and we assume they want the best for Bridgewater, I think that committee should go forward, that's my discussion, thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chase and then Ms. Strigles.
Thank you very much. What I'm particularly concerned about is the fact that the proposal that was attached to our agenda for this evening, that Counselor Ellenberg is referring to, I, I don't understand the rationale for the replacement of three members of the town council who originally had been nominated to serve on the ad hoc committee by the town manager, for those three council members to be selected against in favor of three different members of the town council to be substituted therefore. I don't understand the reasoning behind that decision, to change the composition of the three town counselors who were originally nominated, and for them to be replaced by three other members of the town council. It would appear to me to be the case that we are all duly qualified to render participation in the ad hoc committee, and I just don't understand what the specific reason is for which the nomination of the town manager, who is authorized to make appointments to the committee, is, in effect, is being challenged, and proposal has been made to substitute three other members, who incidentally, in the aggregate, all represent a much lesser degree of tenure, if you will, on the council, don't have as much experience as the three members of the council who were initially recommended for positions on the ad hoc committee. Is that something that Counselor Ellenberg might be able to illuminate us as to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chase. If I may, Mr. President...
You have the floor, Ms. Ellenberg, go right ahead.
I believe that we have a situation where, I'm going to speak frankly, we have an insider situation with an inside deal possibility, or we have a straightforward, above-board, with critical expertise road to go down. Now, the counselors who are no longer there are going to be the ones up for election, they are in essence the oldest expression of the citizens' will and vote, may I suggest that newer members are a more recent expression of the will of the voters. I would also point out that several members, yourself, Mr. President, and you, Mr. Chase, are up for reelection. You may win, you may lose. If you lose, you will no longer be eligible for the committee. Should we not put in people that have more longevity, potentially?
We, as members of the council, are currently empowered with all powers as council members.
For your term.
So for you to look ahead prospectively, and to make judgments about the likelihood of our reelection to serve on the committee going forward, is highly speculative and inappropriate. And I believe, in fact, that you have, you have a feeling that we are simply not going to vote in accord with your favorite view on this matter.
No, no.
All right, hold on.
I'm talking about process, insider versus above-board, that's what I'm talking about.
Thank you for your comment.
I thought above-board, I had my hand first.
All right, let me hold, let me, Ms. Ellenberg, I'm sorry, hold your comments, Ms. Ellenberg, Ms. Strigles has the next comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we're on the topic of process, I do believe that if you put someone's name on a piece of paper, on an, on an amendment of sorts, you should probably give them the heads-up that their name is there.
That's true, you're the only one that didn't, but you're new, you have term, you have time.
This is not a conversation back and forth, Ms. Ellenberg, let us state it.
The issue is, you never contacted me, and I know that you spoke to individual citizens to be on that, so why didn't you speak to your fellow counselors?
If I could interrupt, and you all can, you all can continue your discussions, but it may be futile, anyway, the appointment under both the charter and the admin code is the purview of the town manager.
Correct.
So you're, you're proposing an ordinance that would not be legal under our charter, so it just is, just as it relates to specific appointments of people, so that's not within the purview of this council.
Correct, and that's a point that I was going to get to, do you have a comment?
I think she's not finished.
I'm sorry, Ms. Strigles, go right ahead.
So that was also to process. This amendment should have read without any names on it, there shouldn't have been a single name on it based on what is allowed, for the simple fact that the town manager is the one that appoints it. So I do think that it created unnecessary dramatics in the realm of our council by listing it this way, I don't know if that was the intent, I hope it wasn't the intent, however, if it was just labeled 11-person, I do think that we would have been able to have a much more feasible discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, may I?
You don't have the floor, no, Mr. Lindy has a question.
So I do want to refute a point that was made earlier by a counselor, that two of the counselors on the original list have less experience than someone else, I happen to be third in terms of experience of this council, and with search committee experience.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Again, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, I threw you to Counselor Ellenberg, you made a, you made a actually very serious comment, characterizing members of this council as insider, pather, whatever, and some above-board. I, I hope you understand the weight of a comment like that to others that are serving with the same intent of trying to make the best decisions for this community, so I would, I would appreciate if you could be very, very clear, but also careful in the way that you explain what exactly you meant by inside process versus above-board.
Okay, may I respond, Mr. President?
Please, if you'd like to make a brief statement.
Okay. We have situations where people are coming forward that are in informal types of talks with people, versus a process. I don't want a backdoor appointment, that's what I'm saying, and I don't think the citizens want a backdoor appointment.
Ms. Ellenberg, we're all trying to go through a process here, we're actually trying to get to the actual ordinance that's establishing the process, so I know your amendments were basically based on that ordinance, not necessarily on your 11-person subcommittee, so let's get back to the matter at hand, I know Mr. Murphy has a question, but I do want to get back to at least the discussion of your 11-person subcommittee, not barring any names, because again, that's an appointment process made by the town manager, not by a council member. Mr. Murphy has a question.
And I would like to address that point.
The pending motion is a motion to amend as it's presently constituted.
From 11 to 5.
No, as it's, as it was presently written by Ms. Ellenberg, there has been no emotion, there's been no subsequent motion to amend, her motion to amend relative to the naming of people, that can be addressed in committee, but as I've made clear on the record, that, that is a, her charter violation. So all that, all that is pending is a motion to amend as it is presently constituted, that amendment would go to committee, it doesn't mean it will get voted, but...
Yeah, but her, the amendments that she submitted, counsel, or regarding the, the ordinance establishing the process, her original motion she made earlier was just regarding the rules and procedures that we sent the ad hoc committee order to, rules and procedures, she was making a motion to change that from 11-person.
Right, but that's already been, that's already been referred.
We, no, but you stated that she wanted to make a motion to change...
She's, she's making a motion to amend, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ellenberg, but you're making a motion to amend proposed ordinance D-FY 25-005.
We haven't even gotten to that yet.
Well...
I thought you were redressing what we were going on with dash 009, after we voted to send to rules and procedures.
You've already voted to, that was already voted to send to rules and procedures.
Right, but you were saying...
You moved on to the next...
I hadn't gotten to that yet, you allowed her to make a motion to change the process from, ad hoc, from 11 to 5.
Right, so the, 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 the motion we are presently on, the ordinance we are presently on, is proposed ordinance D-FY 25-005.
I haven't even started the discussion on that yet.
Right, action has already been taken on the prior, it has already been sent to committee.
So we can't take any further action on that?
Correct, it's already, the action is gone, it was sent to committee by you all.
And then it was a miscommunication in...
I, I also am of the understanding, based on the way that it's chronologically placed in your agenda, that Ms. Ellenberg's amendment relates to D-FY 25-005, but correct me if I'm wrong.
It relates to Mr. Counselor Murphy's process that he is proposing.
Okay, let, yeah, you guys can finish your argument, but, so, so that is correct, so what I'm saying is, where you're at in your agenda, just so we can all get on the same page, is this, the prior legislation for the preliminary screening ad hoc committee is done, you took a vote, it has been moved to committee, there are no more votes to be taken on that. You can take votes and amend it later, but that, you've taken your vote, that has been moved to committee, so the committee's in charge of that for now.
But, but...
Now you are on...
Didn't you say we could amend it?
Now you're on, now you're on proposed ordinance FY 25-005, which is Mr. Murphy's ordinance. Ms. Ellenberg, you proposed an amendment to that ordinance, I believe, however, we all need to do it in the proper way, so I think the first step, if you are intending on proposing amendments to that, are as follows. Number one, that has to first go to the floor, and you have to determine, you should make a motion to what committee it's going to go to, correct?
Yes.
Number two, at that time, Ms. Ellenberg, you can move to make a motion to amend, take a vote on the amendment, and then take a vote on moving it to committee, does that make sense?
Yes, and then I agree, that's what her amendment was written for, to address that, that ordinance, which we haven't started discussion on yet.
The other ordinance is...
She tried to make, she tried to make a motion to change 11 to 5 after we referred to rules and procedures, so that was taken out of order.
Yeah, it's already in committee, you voted it to committee.
All right, that's fine, so that's taken out of order. So then we will go ahead and move forward to discussion of the proposed ordinance FY 25-005, an ordinance establishing the process of hiring a town manager. This was brought forth by Counselor Murphy, so I will give Counselor Murphy the floor to, to start the discussion on this, this ordinance.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's much I can add, if you haven't watched a town council meeting over the last two months, you'll understand why we need this written down in writing, right? So in all seriousness, I put forth a plan that will take place now and in the future for any opening of a town manager position, and so hopefully future town council members can follow a step-by-step process when a vacancy occurs for the town manager position that's clearly outlined and can be actionable, so that we don't result in the delay that we've experienced over the last 45-plus days. I think I address committee, interview process, appointment process, and I tried to be as thorough as possible, I've used other towns' processes, I've used citizens' input in here, I've used council's input as well, I've tried to open it up as wide as possible, getting the most input, and I hope that councilors will participate in that, now that it's on the agenda, to also give their feedback, and so I have no further induction, I, I don't think it needs any further induction, so I'm happy to, to open it up.
So what I would suggest that we do, again, this needs to be referred, first part of this processing this ordinance needs to go to rules and procedures, so I'll ask for a motion to refer to rules and procedures in a second for discussion, and then we can have further discussion on it.
Point, point of...
Hold on a second, Mr. Strigles made a motion, and we have a second by Mr. Chase. Mr. Chase, did you want to start the discussion as the second?
I'll, I'll let you proceed right now.
Who was first?
So to you, to the town attorney.
Okay, yes.
Under Section 1 Purpose, under the second paragraph, it says, "This section is in no way applies to or amends," okay, so amends the process set forth in Article 4, Section 4.7 of the Town Charter, applicable to the temporary absence of the town manager, do you agree with that statement?
Yeah, I think that's true.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, because we can't amend the charter, the whole...
Yeah, you, you can't make charter changes, and I think that's the intent of that being written that way, because you're, all you're doing is, you're basically filling in a gap in the process. It, it says that you have to make these appointments, right, but it, there's nothing that says this is the process to follow.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Ms. Ellenberg, you had a question next.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to, with the motion which is on the floor, make an amendment before it goes to rules and process for the 11-member...
The amendment that you have, you have written down here, is what you're putting forth?
Yes, and I, and I am perfectly fine with omitting the names if that is necessary to make this fly, however, I would ask for citizen experts to be appointed.
Well, again, I would say, number one, Ms. Ellenberg, the problem being that with what you've listed here, there's a lot of names, we're establishing, we're establishing an ordinance that's going to be a part of the, the town code, the admin code going forward, not only for us to follow now, but in the future, so it's really impossible to put any names in something like that.
That's fine.
So, so again, though, I want to be clear just on the procedure, so you guys follow it properly, so first, there's, I believe Ms. Ellenberg made a motion to amend, is that correct?
Correct.
And has anyone seconded that motion?
Second for discussion.
Okay, so I would start there, and then if you need to amend the amendment, that's another motion in a second.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Mr. President, could I ask a question before we go on to the amendment?
Yes, Ms. McGrath.
Okay, thank you for, Mr. Murphy, for the thorough work you've done on the process for this hiring. The evaluations will be based on qualifications that are set, the qualifications that you have are a little bit limited, and I'd like to establish additional qualifications, which the town council legally can. I'd like to have project manager listed as either having education or prior experience, community development, prior experience, communication skills, crisis management, and leadership, and I'd like to know what areas and what evaluation ratings you will use to select a candidate.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, Ms. McGrath, I actually don't disagree with some of the items that you've listed in there, I would just question whether those items belong in the ordinance itself or in an actual job description for the candidate, I think, my opinion would be, it would be better served in a job description that would be posted publicly, and thus would be the qualifications that the committee would go by, I just don't know if we need to be, my opinion, and certainly open others, don't need to be that specific in the ordinance itself.
And just to echo that, I'll get to you, Ms. Strigles, I believe most of that language is coming from our, our town charter and description of a town manager.
I understand, but it does say even in your, in your ordinance here that we can add qualifications, so I just wanted to make sure that we get a chance to do that, and to, I didn't see anything about evaluations, so what ratings do you use, so I would just like to discuss that before that goes further.
Another amendment?
No.
Mr. Murphy, do you have a...
I was just going to ask, are you making a motion to amend it or change it?
Well, first... Well, first, we still haven't, we need to be addressing the initial motion to amend, which was Ms. Ellenberg's motion to amend, which she has written out.
Right.
I've heard a motion in a second. I think the discussion needs to be limited to that until you all vote that, and then you can move on to the next motion.
Amendment of the amendment, type of thing.
Ms. Strigles, question regarding the current motion, then.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Our town council actually said exactly what I was going to say, that we were off topic based on what was on the floor.
Certainly. So, going back then to Ms. Ellenberg, do you have any amendments that you want to make to your ordinance at this point in time?
I will speak to my intention to amend the amendment. However, at this point, I put the amendment as written forward to be considered.
Okay. That being said, any other further questions regarding the amendment as written? Ms. McGrath.
So, we're keeping the people's names on it as forward?
This is how she's presenting her amendment at this point in time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Counselor Ellenberg, for providing the council with another option. I believe eleven is too much, five is too little, and I would like seven or nine members. As for your members, there are conflicts of interest, you know, like the planning zone. Peter Driscoll, right now, is developing in town, so that's a concern. The highway department, I think that's great. John Higgins, I don't know where he works, if he's retired.
In the private sector.
But it's accounting and finance, so I would know the company, so if that would be a conflict of interest. I'm just stating my point of view. So, you have the state police retirement. I would like to see a retired fireman or policeman, but one that lives in town, like Officer Ferndes, that just retired thirty-six years on the police force, rather than a state police officer, because President Bridgewater, police officer would know more. And for banking, I would prefer ABBA Banking, because they work with our Bridgewater businesses. And Carlton Hunt, I think that's excellent. And Donna, I'm not quite sure, because I don't know...
Again, we're looking to Donna specifically speak of people they...
Well, she said there was no conflict of interest, and I see there's a conflict of interest.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what you were addressing there, okay.
I'm addressing conflict of interest.
All right.
So, with the last one, Donna, I don't know what executive union construction industry is, but that might be a conflict of interest with all of our buildings.
Projects potentially going on in town.
So, that's, that's all I'm saying.
I have a point of inquiry.
Ms. Robinson.
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Ellenberg. So, Counselor Strigles had mentioned that she was not aware she was in this list. Is every other person that you have named
Aware?
Aware? So, that's my first question. And then, my second question was, is I thought that we already established that this cannot contain names regardless, because we are
Right, but she wants to submit, she wants to submit this amendment as written.
According to him, I can't do, I have to do an amendment on the amendment.
Okay.
Right, you, so, right now, you're still operating under the current amendment, which you wrote, and then the next step would be, if you want to amend the amendment, you have to make a motion to amend the amendment, if you have the floor. If you don't, then other motions can be made in the interim, but that would be the next step, if that's what you intend.
No, I...
Can she still answer the first question, though? Is every single person that you did name in this ordinance or this order, are they aware and did they agree to be listed in this order?
They did, although it was verbal over the telephone, it's not like I have it in writing from people.
I asked that specifically, because Counselor Strigles had mentioned that she was not aware she was in this...
She's the only one. But I thought she would be flattered at being put on the committee.
So, actually, I would, I didn't intend to share this, but I did have somebody from that list contact me, and they were also not aware. So, that is why I'm asking. So, I would just, I think it's just helpful that we, again, follow the process.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I think, I think we've debated this enough, so I'd like to make a motion to limit debate and a motion to...
Okay, so, motion made to limit debate, and second, roll call vote to end debate on the matter.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg? I'm sorry, Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
So...
So, the vote you're taking now is on the amendment first.
Yes, we're taking a vote on the amendment as written by Ms. Ellenberg. I need a roll
Make a motion to send a rules and procedures?
No, we're not, yeah.
Already a pending motion for rules and procedures. There was a motion to amend on top of your motion of Ms. Ellenberg, so now you have to take a roll call vote of Ms. Ellenberg's motion to amend.
Right, so I have to make that motion to amend?
No, you don't have to amend anything. It's already pending. You have to take a vote now.
That's a, so, I'm asking for a roll call vote on Ms. Ellenberg's amendment as written.
Motion to amend, yep.
Can I ask a question of the town attorney? Can Ms. Ellenberg remove that?
I gave her the opportunity to remove the names, she declined.
No, she didn't. No, because you just limited the debate, so now...
No, I want to do that. I thought you told me I couldn't do that.
No, I gave you the back of the floor, Ms. Ellenberg, asking if you wanted to make any amendments to your amendment, and you declined to make any amendments.
Well, I now change my position.
Well, it's too bad. We've already ended debate. We're moving on to the amendment as written.
Okay.
So, roll call vote onto the amendment as written. Please, Josh.
Mr. McKinnon?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Strigles?
No.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Thank you, one in favor, eight against.
Okay, so now, going back to the original motion to move the ordinance to rules and procedures, a roll call vote, please.
Ms. McGrath?
Excuse me, what are we doing now? Is getting...
The original motion on the floor was to move this ordinance to rules and procedures for review.
Mr. Murphy's...
Yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, I mean, I'm sorry.
Counselor Murphy's, yes, the ordinance. This is step one for this ordinance, is to go to rules and procedures.
I wasn't sure if we were done with the debate of it, or the discussion of it. That's what I was confused, because we were interrupted by the amendment.
Your vote to...
End discussion was on the...
The last question was only on the amendment.
Okay, so we can reopen discussion?
So, I would like to make a motion to amend that original amendment as suggested by the town attorney. Will anyone second that?
That motion already failed.
Their motions failed. We can't bring up that motion.
Are you making a new motion to amend it?
Yes.
What is the current motion?
The current motion is to accept the amendment without names.
We've already defeated the amendment as written.
No, it had, as written, had the names on it.
Yeah, but we can't bring up the same...
Why not? Without names.
She can make, she can make a motion to amend.
Okay.
Without names.
That is different than the, than the prior motion to amend.
Okay.
And you all can discuss it, or second it, or do what you want, and then move forward on that one, and then you have to eventually get back to your procedural one.
It seems like we're going back in circles, then.
You are. Each time you move a question, it needs to be by two-thirds, and only the person with the floor has the ability to move the question. So, I, where you're at right now is, you are on your motion to refer. There has been a new amendment made to the motion to refer, or to the underlying order that will be referred. That order, or that motion to amend is different than the prior, so it's allowed.
Oh, okay.
And then, you can have discussion on that, if that's what you all choose.
Thank you, thank you.
So, your current motion is what, Ms. Ellenberg?
And I would like to move the amendment without names, as suggested, and put that up for a vote.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Mr....
So, are you making a motion to amend and a motion to move the question, or what is, what...
I was making a motion to amend, to move...
To amend in the way.
To move this amendment.
No.
No, no. You're making, you would be making a motion to amend, to have the names removed. You can, you, that's not the motion, though. The motion is to amend the underlying order, or ordinance, sorry, in the way that you're proposing in your written amendment, except for there being specifically spelled out names. That is the motion you're trying to bring, I believe.
I second that.
No, you made it.
I can't make the motion, but that, I believe that's...
Did you get that down?
So, the motion put forth then, Counselor Ellenberg, is your amendments is listed minus the names.
Correct.
And we have a second by Mr. Lindy.
Could I ask a question?
Second by Mr. Lindy. Ms. McGrath has a question.
Okay, so, we are already ascending the F Y twenty-five zero zero nine town search ad hoc to the rules and procedures.
It's already gone to rules and procedures, correct.
So, now, this, ad hoc is going to change...
She's making suggestions for the ad hoc in this proposed ordinance that would be reviewed by rules and procedures.
That the underlying...
Wait a minute. So, then, they come, both come back to us, and then would vote which one we want?
No, Ms., again, the ordinance for the ad hoc is its own, I should say, is its own order.
Right.
This ordinance does discuss a five-member ad hoc. She's suggesting making amendments to that within the ordinance, which will be reviewed again by rules and procedures.
To the ad hoc that's already been...
That's already a separate order. But, again, they would have to be congruent by the time that we're done.
Okay.
One is an order, one is an ordinance. The order, I believe, is intended to serve a purpose right now as an ad hoc committee, and it won't have the way, it's temporary in nature, because it's an ad hoc committee, and that's why it's an order. It's a directive. And the ordinance is to fill a gap that is left by the charter.
The ordinance is going to take more time, Ms. McGrath, again, and that's, you know, could be still spelled out in future discussions and meetings. But, again, they will be congruent at some point in time. But she's making perpetual amendments to it now that we're taking up as a discussion and vote on. So, right now, the promotion is, everything she has amended as written, taking out the names, but that basically leaves the listing of what she has on the right-hand side. So, I have a motion in a second.
So, it just goes to rules, and then we'll vote it on next time?
Well, this is, again, amendments could get passed on that rules and procedures would review, yes.
Can I ask a question? Clarifying question?
Yes, Ms. Murphy.
You said she's eliminating the names but keeping the...
I could get clarification. Are you leaving the qualifications, or are we taking those on out as well?
Mr. President, may I ask Mr. Murphy what he suggests?
This is your, this is your amendment, so...
I'm just asking to clarify.
Yeah. What is your, what is your desire on your amendment?
The desire of my amendment is to have qualified people.
Right, but you still listing, are you going by the people, the departments that you listed? Are you keeping those as listed?
Yes.
All right. So, any further discussion on the amendments as listed? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Strigles, I didn't see.
I have a point of clarification. Are we moving, are we striking all of number three?
I believe she just...
Or are we leaving, are we leaving job descriptions of what people do normally?
That's what she just said. She's leaving the job descriptions, just taking out the names.
Can I ask the reasoning of that?
The reasoning, the reasoning...
Only because they're vague, so I'm just asking.
Yes, Ms. Strigles. Ms. Ellenberg, you may address Ms. Strigles' question.
Thank you. My feeling is that the search committee ad hoc people should come from different backgrounds, and thus, be able to ask the questions of the candidates, of things that they know about. I'm not qualified to be a project manager. I know that. I need someone else who can do, ask those questions. That's why I want qualifications in the ordinance.
So, thank you for that. Wouldn't your line item on number one qualify that of just listing it as citizen experts and leaving it up to the rules and procedures to define, maybe, or in the overall ordinance, what those citizen experts would be, instead of listing them how they are right here?
So, are you proposing another amendment on top of the amendment?
No, I'm just trying to lose any confusion about the amendment that we currently have. If we're eliminating names, I feel like the job description should probably go with them.
Well, I'm moving it with the job descriptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Any other questions? Okay, so, the vote now, a roll call vote to vote on the amendments as listed by Ms. Ellenberg, striking the names, but everything else is still present. May I have a roll call vote? Josh.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Ms. Strigles?
No.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
Abstain.
That's a, that's a no.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Ellenberg?
I will abstain also, since I'm naming myself on the committee.
No. It's equivalent to a no. Ms. Robinson?
No.
Mr. McKinnon?
No.
Mr. President?
Zero in favor, seven against.
And two abstains, which is essentially no.
Okay. Can, can, can...
Question, Ms. Lindy.
I asked the town attorney through you, where it, can you read to me the language in the charter that says an abstention is a no?
Yeah, so, we tally votes by way of counting affirmative votes. So, if you don't vote in the affirmative, it counts as a negative. And that's why a tie fails. That's why, we only count votes in the affirmative.
Do we also use Robert's Rules of Order?
You can abstain, but an abstention under the way that we tally votes is a no.
Essentially a no vote.
Because we count votes in the affirmative.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Well, or, or, part two is you...
Abstain is take no position. I agree with, with Ms. McGrath on the number.
You're obligated to take votes, and if you decide not to take votes by abstaining, that's a no, because we count votes in the affirmative. If I...
Can you read me that language?
Yes, I'll find it in the charter, and I will get it for you, and I will be very clear about your obligation as a town counselor to take votes on every order that comes before you, and if you decide for yourself to abstain on a matter, you're actually not following what the charter requires you to do. And I'm counting it as a no, rather than making an issue of it, frankly.
Does it say anyplace in the charter that we follow Robert's Rules of Order or in our council procedures?
Where it doesn't speak to it other, in other places. That's right.
Our own rules will take precedence over Robert's Rules.
I will make sure that I get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, then. So, going back to the original vote to send the ordinance D F Y twenty-five dash zero zero five, two rules and procedures for review. I have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Josh. I'm sorry, any further discussion on rules, on the ordinance as well, because there was another vote for amendments? Is there any other further discussion on the ordinance itself?
I was just going to ask...
Ms. McGrath.
Counselor Murphy, if evaluations and ratings and stuff, will that be included, or that's for further down the road?
I actually don't have specifics on that in here.
Okay.
That certainly would be addressed once the town manager is hired, but not necessarily in the, you know, the procedure of hiring.
Well, evaluations is based on the qual, like, when you interview someone, you have evaluation rates, so how well they were qualified, their strengths, their weaknesses. I was just wondering if that's going to be included.
It's not. It's not included currently.
Okay. Okay.
But you're welcome to make an amendment, right, to include that if needed?
You can always make amendments until it's voted out to committee, so...
Again, if you have any potential edits or information you want to submit to rules and procedures...
Well, I'm just concerned how you rate who's qualified and not if you don't have evaluations. I mean, you just say, oh, he sounds good and we're going to bring him in. Usually, I mean, the hiring process that I've been involved in, they have evaluation points to, you know, they're qualified, their strength in communication, so it's a set of, straight across the board for each candidate. I was just wondering how...
Right, and again, that's all, that's the details, and this is just a general overview of the procedure of what we will be doing to go through the process. Ms. Strickles, question?
Yes, thank you. I think to add clarification is how I understood it was, this is a, I don't want to call it a blanket process, but a pretty easy step-by-step process for us to follow, and that job description is going to be built by the ad hoc committee. Is that correct, Councilor Murphy? That that's, that's the impression, that they're going to be responsible for the job description?
I mean, I'm not going to speak to that, I'll only speak what's in the ordinance, but...
I mean, the ad hoc will be involved in, in working with, again, if they decide to go with a search firm, they're going to get the details to the search firm as far as those types of details, and that's going to be worked out in those, those types of processes.
And then we'll have a job description to go on.
Right, and the ordinance is basically, like I say, a step-by-step process of how the council can go about the steps of hiring a new interim or, but the individual steps will be detailed whether, within the ad hoc or within the, the hiring firm brought on and things of that nature. Mr. Lindy, question?
Point of information to you, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Have we gotten proposals for a search firm and has one been selected?
Nothing's been selected yet because we haven't informed the ad hoc, and that's up to the ad hoc to determine the direction that the, we're going to go with, whether it's the, whether it's the search firm, whether it's the MMA, there's, you know, but that's, that's in the hands of the ad hoc.
So, let me rephrase, has, have we received proposals from search firms?
There's been, there's been response from firms due to the RFP that was put out there, yes.
Who put out the RFP?
Do you know how many? Do you know how many?
I don't have the exact number yet, I think there was about eight last night, I had heard a number.
Oh.
Uh, Ms. Robinson?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to expand a little bit on the question from Council McGrath. So, through you to Council McGrath, are you, are you suggesting, for instance, as I look at this, under the announcement and vacancy of an ad hoc committee, so there is one and two, one is about the preliminary ad hoc committee, and then the second, once established, the preliminary screening ad hoc committee will prepare a detailed job description and qualifications for the town manager position? Were you, were you asking, for instance, does it make sense to have like a rubric, for instance? That's a phrase that folks, or to your point, like evaluation, so those in the search committee have to use the same set of criteria of how they're basing their qual, they're dictating that somebody is qualified? Is that, is that what you were getting at?
Yes. Well, usually during a hiring process, you already have a rating, so you would, qualifications, so if I interview you, I would say outstanding, and the success rate is low, I mean, the success rate is high, and it would go down. He's good...
Right, yeah.
But his, it's medium, it's not, doesn't meet all the qualifications, and we would assess how successful that person would be. And the other evaluations would be on your communications, your, you know, other stuff more personal, like...
Yes.
So, there would be two evaluation, and that's how we would pick out a candidate.
Yes, that's exactly what my organization does professionally, like, we have, so some places call it a rubric, some people call it just, you know, an evaluation, feedback, that sort of thing. I, I mean, certainly you brought it up, so I will leave it to you if you want to amend anything, but I wonder if there is opportunity, you know, to add something there in that line that feels like that might be considered part of the process?
Well, I wasn't part of the process when you interviewed the last town manager, so I don't know if hiring, a hiring firm actually has that process. So, since you put this here, I'm not sure if you're going to amend this once you talk to a hiring firm, or this is how it's going to be for the hiring firm? They have to go by this, or is the committee, just hold on one second, or is the, like, the town's going to use this process?
The town's going to use this process, but I'm sorry, I'm unclear on the question you're asking.
So, we have a hiring committee that's coming in.
Sure.
Right? So, they're going to use their own process of interviewing and all that. We just tell them what qualifications we want. So, they'd probably do their evaluation and all that. So, this is going to tell the hiring firm how we want to process?
Are you referring to the firm, sorry, or the ad hoc committee that's created, just for clarity? I'm not understanding what you're asking.
I mean, the search firm.
The search firm, so...
Yeah.
This one is the process for hiring a town manager?
Correct.
Right. So, you have qualifications and stuff like that?
Correct.
So, now, we have a search firm that's going to look for an interview, do they do their own evaluations and stuff like that?
They're going to, I'm just...
Because they're going to evaluate candidates and then bring so many to you guys, or is the ad hoc part of that?
I, I think you're asking me a speculative question, assuming we have a search firm and going down the line, right?
We, we, we're hiring a search firm, aren't we?
I, we're not, right now. My understanding is the ad hoc committee will decide that.
The ad hoc committee will decide that, so again...
Whether we hire one or not?
It's, it's up to the ad hoc that's put together that's deciding on the direction of, if we're using an outside firm, more than likely, yes, but that's one of the potentials. What's that?
Didn't we vote on having, hiring a ad hoc?
No, no, we did not.
The permanent town manager?
No.
Is that why the town...
We haven't gotten to that yet, we're establishing a procedure to get there. We're establishing an ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc committee will determine the procedure of bringing candidates to the table, more than likely than going with one of the firms that responded to the RFP of the town. And then, once that firm is chosen, that firm will come in and work with the ad hoc, with the council, with the public, to determine what type of candidate we want as a town manager, including qualifications, including many of the things that you mentioned. And then, they'll gather all that information and look at the candidates they have, put together a group of eight to 10, possibly, maybe more, and present that to the ad hoc, the ad hoc will go through those, those, those...
The town manager sent out a purview to, for...
The RFP went out to the firms, yes.
Looked for hiring.
But we haven't acted on any of that yet because that's the purview of the ad hoc once it's formed.
So, before this goes through, was it up to the town council to hire the firm?
No, it's, it's the purview of the ad hoc committee once it's formed.
It's always been that way.
Yeah, well, that's what we're trying to get to, yes.
But, but before, was it the town council that would, would decide to hire which firm?
No, the firm.
It's always at the ad hoc.
It's the ad hoc that typically will go through and do that.
Typically, but doesn't have to be.
Can I just, real quick, I just want to interject, I did find that in your rules about abstaining. So, it's rule number nine of the council rules, viva votes and raised hands. It says, "Every member present when a question is put shall vote unless the council for special reasons excuses him. Application to be so excused on any question shall be made before the town council has decided a question, and such application shall be accompanied by a brief statement of the reasons and shall be decided without debate." And that coupled with the fact that we count affirmative votes makes the, in abstention, a no vote, all right? So, your, your rules require a vote, that's number one. So, abstaining is not technically a vote in the yea or nay, but we count votes in the affirmative. So, that coupled with the way we count votes means an abstention is essentially a no.
Okay.
Ask him a question?
Please, go ahead, Mr. ...
If you have a conflict of interest?
You would, you would say, I want to be excused from voting...
Right.
And then, you would have an application to be excused on any question shall be made before the town council has decided that question. So, if you knew in advance, I have a conflict of interest, you, you need to say, I need to be excused from voting on this question, and then the council as a body would decide, okay, you can be excused from that.
So, if my name was on the list, I could have said that?
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, and maybe I should have done that?
It, it's just, you just can't abstain, that, that was my point.
I've never been on a body before that...
These are your rules. I didn't write them, so, yeah.
Right hand, so, any further questions? Yeah, Mr. ...
Sorry, I just wanted to comment on Ms. McGrath's question one more time. I, I think your question about a rubric or a rating sheet, I think, is perfectly relevant, I think is necessary, I think it would be the responsibility of the ad hoc committee to do this. I also am in full support of this being as transparent as possible, which is the premise for why I wrote this, or this ordinance. And so, I agree with you, what you're asking, but I think it, it doesn't belong in the ordinance itself, it belongs further down the line, and so that would be my suggestion. But above all else, I think it needs to be transparent, and I personally would like to see that rubric shared, you know, as much as possible on what the committee is rating its, its candidates on, but I just don't feel like it belonged in the ordinance. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to move the question, please.
Thank you, and do I have a second?
Second.
For Ms. Strickles. All right, we need a roll call vote to move the question so we can vote on sending it to rules and procedures.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
All right, so we're now moving the question, the vote now is to move this ordinance to rules and procedures, and I, again, need a roll call vote. Josh.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you very much, so that our move to also rules and procedures. That ends the new business discussion for this evening. We will move on to citizen comments. If any citizens that are left over would like to come up and speak, please come up and do so. Name and address for the record, please.
Lynette Allen O'Chase, Old Farm Road, Bridgewater. I want to thank Ms. Robinson for her comments regarding comments made by other councilors today, which I found very disrespectful. You are speculating on eight months away that people will not be here. You are not taking into account experience, and I find it incredibly disrespectful.
Anybody else like to come up and speak? Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Bill Wood, 388 Hayward Street. We're all volunteers, when I say we, I include myself because I wrote the handbook. I encourage you all to take a deep understanding of the 15 or 16 pages that I read, that I wrote. It would help clarify the difference between abstain and recuse, it would clarify where that's defined in the rules of the council. It says the priority of the rules, which is the charter first, council rules second, and then Robert's rules third, right? So, and then, when you don't have that, then you get into debate. But it gives a priority of those and, and how you need to pay attention. The handbook is not about how to, how to make an opinion, the handbook is about improving procedure. It talks about, you know, two layers of amendments, et cetera, and it would make your, your lives, whether you're on one side or the other, a whole lot easier if you understand the whole breadth of the rules that you're governing under, and it would make things a lot, lot smoother. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Anybody else like to come up? Dr. Hunt?
Yeah, Carlton Hunt, Austin Street, and we have a half an hour left before you have to vote, three hours to continue. Thanks for adding that to the, what I talked about, I really appreciate, appreciate it. I'm a little bit disappointed in the interview of Ms. Robinson, because there was no questions asked about committees, boards, and commissions. My question is very simple. May, I guess it's a request, I, I'm disappointed because I didn't hear her philosophy on the use and of volunteer committees. I personally have enough experience to know that they have been neglected seriously. For example, I don't believe we have a Board of Health mandated by state law, but... The other thing is, I would like to have Ms. Robinson at some point, at least, issue a statement as to how she will interact with boards, committees, and commissions, especially on their roles and how she will engage them. I think it's really critical where the town is right now to continue to really engage with those boards, committees, and commissions. It's really critical, and I, I'm, like I said, I'm disappointed that the committee did not ask those questions because I don't think you have enough experience about what the board's roles are doing, and so therefore, it's simply, could you please do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Anybody else? Please come on up, name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Eleanor Wentworth, I live at 14 Ridgewood Circle. I heard that the, in the process for looking for a new candidate, that they must be a resident of Bridgewater. We're a town of what, 30-plus people, thousand people, that's how many people here could, living in the city, would be available and, and be still qualified, because that's what we're looking for. So, I made a suggestion last night that if they were in agreement to moving to the city within three months, or live within a certain, maybe 20 miles from the city so that they'd be available. Just because if we're looking for the most qualified person, is it possible to get a full-time person from Bridgewater? That's it.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Mrs. Hanson?
Janet Hanson, I don't know if my voice, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I want to thank Ms. Robinson for clarifying the number of hours. I don't know all the ins and outs of town managing, but it did reassure me a little bit. I want to thank everybody for their time, it was a heated thing, pros and cons, I don't necessarily agree with everything everybody necessarily says, but I appreciate everybody's time, I don't want you to think that we don't. And I just, I appreciate that we need to look at this carefully and not rush through, and I just hope everybody continues to get along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? Okay. Thank you, those who came up to speak tonight, thank you so much. We will move now to council comments, and I will start with, actually, Mr. McKinnon, are you still on board there? You want to make any comments? Is he still there?
No, it took me a second. I just, real quick, just want to say, I hope everyone stays healthy, 7:00, 6:00, it's Friday, and this is no fun. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. McKinnon. Council Robinson?
Uh, thank you. I always appreciate folks who come to speak here at our meetings, I appreciate folks who've also reached out individually or in groups as well. I, I think that the community appreciates the two-way dialogue that isn't always afforded by the format that we have for, for council. I have said, however, in every single conversation I've had, whether, again, it's been individual or with groups, that one of the things that I keep observing that's a consistent theme is there's a lot of speculation, there are a lot of rumors, and what has been happening is a lot of narrative that the council is doing back, back-room dealings, or that, you know, it's been questioned around the integrity of the members, some of the members of the council, and then, when I ask for specifics of what is driving that, I, I hear nothing. And then, when I provide information around actual conversations I have or questions that I've given, I'm also met with very little response. I, I understand that we can disagree, we may not always be on the same page, but I would just really ask and encourage, you know, our, our constituents are asking for, for us to listen to them, I also would ask for that two-way, you know, listening cycle around, we are trying our best to make decisions that are very, very serious, and we all care very deeply about this community. We are all trying our best with the information at hand, we are asking questions, we've invested a lot of personal time into this process already, and we hardly have even started. So, I, I think it's just a plea around, I would really echo the sentiment of, can we please be respectful? Can we please not say, oh, you're, you're hiding something when it's simply, I disagree with you, it's okay to see you disagree? That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for your comments. To Ms. Chase, I meant no disrespect to your husband.
Please don't, that's not my comment, my comment is, you're behaving...
Okay.
Please, Ms. Allenberg, just make comments on the address.
So, so in any case, I'm going to just say that I am acting on my conscience. And that's where I'm coming from. And I hope to do my best. I hope to be respectful. I think I've been respectful. And I'll do my best. That's my promise.
Thank you, Ms. Allenberg. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I'll just try to keep it short and sweet. I just also thank everybody that came out tonight. I have spent a lot of time over the last month listening to citizens, attending meetings, hosting meetings, attending events, and I think the overarching theme has been, citizens wanna move this town forward, and there needs to be a process to do so. So I have responded to that by writing the ordinance tonight and by listening to those citizens. It does not incorporate every bit of feedback that I got or every input. It cannot possibly do that. But I put forth what I believe is the best process for the town of Bridgewater. So I understand there'll be discussion around citizen participation and so forth. My personal opinion on that will be that citizens, employees, public safety, who are also employees, business owners, each of those individuals should have a say in this process. And if I am elected ultimately to the, or ratified as a member of the ad hoc committee, I will personally ensure that this process is transparent and inclusive of all those individuals and more. Because that's the commitment I think we should all make as elected town officials. So I understand the ordinance may not please everybody, but I will do my best to make it as transparent and as, as inclusive as possible. So that's my commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Ms. Lindy?
Well, I was gonna originally abstain on any council comments. However, I'm gonna just state clearly that what I'm doing is what my constituents have asked me to do, to listen to them, to include them, and to be part of the process, not later on when they're focus groups. I also do not appreciate lectures from other councillors on how I should conduct myself, or former councillors for that matter. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Mr. Chase?
No, I think nothing further this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Riggles?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. My one comment, I, I hear Council Lindy on his sentiments. I do, however, think that there's a level of decorum that needs to remain in this room, in this council chambers, not only for those in the gallery who are giving hours and hours as citizens to sit here and give us their feedback, but as councillors who are elected to be professional, I do think that there is a level of decorum that needs to be met. I also would like to mention that I know everyone that comes up, the citizens have said, we don't want the process rushed. We don't want the process rushed. I will tell you, we've spent forty-five days talking in circles. It's not being rushed. We are listening. Please work with us. Please respect the time that we're putting in. I thank the sentiments that you have made about the time and the energy that we're putting in, but please remain respectful. Some of us do still work full-time, so we can't always answer you within an hour. We will get back to you, we promise. So just please work with us, please be respectful, and understand that we are taking this as it comes, and it has been a slow process.
Thank you, Ms. Riggles. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a councilor, I have a table at the Autumn Fest to recruit residents to join committees, commissions, and board members. I will be reaching out to the councils and the committee and commission and board members to attend this event to help me. I just received it today, so I don't have a lot of information, but I would like to make, to thank Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Robinson for assisting me in getting this. Thank you.
Great, Ms. McGrath. Excellent idea, and I do like that a lot. Again, I'll summarize again, you know, I'm, I'm here as your council president trying to lead this whole process. Again, it's been difficult so far. We tried to do it through conversation and debate. We are realizing that we do have to do more through legislation, and that's what our body is designed to do. It is going to take time, but we do not have all the time in the world. We do basically have a hundred and eighty days to try and get someone in position because this charter doesn't really address any time beyond that. So I, I do encourage the council as a whole to, to continue to work together to move